Join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection eight of the Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Opens Meeting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Welcome to the, our guests this evening, uh, could we have roll call please?
George Klein.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Kevin Alexi.
Here.
Clay Anderson.
Here.
Could we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane to approve the agenda. We have roll call please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes for the city council meeting from December sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, there's no correspondence and there are no minutes for boards and commissions. Could we have roll call please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Item B on the agenda is a motion to designate Dustin Glass as the street superintendent for the city of Shadrin effective January one twenty twenty-five through end of the year December thirty-first twenty twenty-five is required the Nebraska Department of Transportation. Someone care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to approve Dustin Glass being the street superintendent.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Clay to approve Dustin Glass as the street cities, city of street superintendent. Could we have roll call please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is building permit report by Janet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Janet Johnson, um, zoning and building official for the city of Shadrin, um. You had in your, in your packet my building report and then you also were given an updated one, um. George asked that I put in the negative sign when a, at the bottom when the permits are a decrease from the year before. So this year in twenty-four was a negative number from the previous year of twenty-three. But most importantly, what I wanted to point out is the building permit totals of permits was up from the previous year. Last year we only had nineteen, this year we're up to thirty-four, which is back in line with where we are from previous years. Um, the commercial permits were almost at seven million dollars worth of permits. The three top permits in that category were the Catholic Church's, um, new building at two point seven and the addition at, for the church out west at two point five million. And then Dollar Tree's, um, new building would be the third big permit. And between those three, we're almost at six million dollars. So then also the other thing I wanted to point out that we had two new homes last year, one in the corporate limits and one out, and then also one manufactured home. So actually three new homes within our jurisdiction. So if you have any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions because we pretty well, everyone's pretty well aware of what's going on in town. You know? We always hear that we don't have any building lots for sale, but, um, I think there are a few around, but it might be hard to find sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item number D on the agenda.
Um. I'd like to introduce resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Yep.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Klein to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one to approve progress estimate number one to McQueen equipment for the high-speed loader mounted rotary plow for the Shadrin Municipal Airport, which is a airport improvement project dollars. Um. Skipping ahead to the bills. Um, I noticed we're cutting the check for the entire amount without the retainage. Is, is that one an error or is it? And I, I know Tom, you asked me about this and I probably didn't understand what I s- agreed to or what you were telling me or whatever, so.
Yeah, George, uh, two things, uh, if you look at the McQueen, uh, bill that we're gonna be submitting is gonna be two hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. The blower itself is two hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and no cents. The difference in there is that we do have a bill from the street department for part of a bill for that, so there is some difference there. Now, as to answer your question is, is why we're only doing the, we're doing the full amount of two hundred ninety-six, but in the progress estimate it's two hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. It simplifies the paperwork itself for the trail itself, and that's why we're doing for the full amount. We will be reimbursed up to five percent less of the two hundred ninety-six is what the city's responsibility will be. And so that'll be roughly right around that fourteen thousand nine, or eight, seven, fifty, or someplace in there. So, but we're resubmitting in order to pay for the whole bill. Because the Queen was.
But, but should, yeah. In my humble opinion, we don't really have the retainage. Right?
Right, but on the other documentation that they provided to us with the written document that they had, they asked that McQueen be paid in full. Do we have that document, uh, what was actually submitted to us? In which they say from, from the f- the email, I guess, that's, that's not on our, our paperwork.
So, so we're really approving in the bills and the payments?
That was from NDOT, yes.
Yes.
No, I, I just did, uh.
You just did the, the res- resolution and then the bill itself.
The bill, yeah, that's what I did.
But in the email it said is to, to submit payment to McQueen. Because McQueen was done on it, we can provide that information to you, George. I guess, is that what you're asking?
Well, I I mean, the, the engineer, the progress estimate signed off by the engineers only gave us approval to pay for two hundred sixty-six thousand, seven, seven, three, fifty. And so we would need another document before we really, in my humble opinion, go ahead and send them the money.
Can we, uh, table this for just a minute too? I, Janet's finding the email that she can bring back to the council to review. And then that'll, I think it'll make it more sense what they're asking us to do. But that's what we understood is that they wanted us to pay McQueen, and that's what we were looking at, we're gonna just pay McQueen in full.
So this has the, the retainage on it as well?
Yes.
As the original?
Yes, the engineer is doing, they're gonna have to do a final, but the two hundred ninety-six thousand is less retainage of the ten percent, which is that twenty-nine thousand, six forty-one fifty. And so what I think of your asking, George, is that you're asking why we just don't pay the two sixty-six versus the whole?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, is that also what the resolution is for? Is for the two sixty-six?
Well, that's, that's exactly what the point I'm making, Kevin.
So we, we would need a, a rewritten resolution?
The engineer's approval is only for two sixty-six and we're paying the two. And we're paying that extra twenty-nine sixty-four, six forty-one fifty. If in fact we need the Olson and the approval from the, um, NDOT.
Okay.
For the entire amount.
Well, if Janet can provide that email for us, that is, we should have had that in here.
So, yeah.
And that's my fault.
And would you, would you say the percentage that we'll end up with?
We'll, we'll end up paying five percent of the two hundred ninety-six thousand, uh, four hundred and fifteen dollars. So roughly half of whatever's that, less that percentage there, fourteen-three.
So by, so by having the, the additional twenty-nine thousand, we'll actually get back more than our original contract?
No, 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 no. The, the engineers just approved the, everything less ten percent retainage for it. And then once they get done finalizing everything, because there's some training, the email explains it better and I can't, I can't recall word for word on it, but I should have had it in the, the documents. And I did not have it in there for you guys to review, and that's my fault, I should have, I should have included that in there.
Okay, we can.
But like, there, there just seems to be a discrepancy between what the resolution states and what we're actually paying, I think that's.
That's the question that you want to know, because the resolution's got it down it.
Yeah, yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah.
Two sixty-six.
Yep.
And so we should be paying the two, ninety-six, four fifteen then maybe.
Well, that, that's what the bills have.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't have approval from the people who control the
No.
with the funding, to, to pay it, I mean, they probably wouldn't ever check the.
So can we table it until Janet gets back and continue on or?
Yeah. Well, since we're gonna return, I don't know if we need a formal motion to table it for ten minutes or whatever. We can just, we'll just come back to it. And move on to the item number E.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash two, move force adoption.
I'll second.
A motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin for resolution twenty twenty-five dash two, which is to rescind resolution twenty eighteen dash fourteen and terminate the memorandum of understanding for the use of the facility named the annex located at five nineteen Bordeaux Street. So. Any questions? Uh, the building has been demolished, um, there's, the land is still there.
I'm glad the land wasn't demolished.
So, um, any question, um? And actually, if I recall, that the land has been deeded over to the city, so.
It has?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
We can.
This is more of a paper trail, finishing up what we got here, but we do have Rosella and Suzie here to answer any questions if there was anything from the rest of the council members. If they had any questions.
Any questions? If not, could we have roll call please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, item number F on the agenda, appointments, reappointments to boards and commissions. The list is fairly short, um. Katie sent all of us and I printed out the whole thing because I'm a paper guy. And when I read through it, it's kind of alarming, so I urge the whole council to, to not consider the boards and commissions activity done for the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzie, for coming.
Um, because I think we have some work to do about trying to fill vacancies, um, making sure we have full boards if the board is needed, if not, if the board is not needed, then we ought, probably ought to address it, but, um. So, I'd just like to recapture, um, for the media and for those out there and happen to be listening on the internet or on cable TV, boards and commissions that are coming up for reappointment, uh, Roger West and Jeff Johns to the Airport Zoning Board, Matt Reeves and Jim Gardner to the Business Improvement District Board, Rob Beela and Katie Shenbeck to the Community Development Advisory Committee, Robin Falk and Heather Crowfoot to the Library Board, Darryl Lang, Chuck Miller and Chris Howard to the Planning Commission, Carrie Bailey and Keith Spencer to the Police Retirement Committee, Lee Branson, Gabe Walls, Mike Wall and uh, need, need to insert, um, a council member um, to the Property Maintenance Code Problem Resolution Team, which is a really important committee, um.
And, um, I just had a brief comment before the meeting, I, I am willing to be the, the council member for that one.
You want to do that? Okay. You've already arm wrestled with Clay and you won.
Yeah, they held me down and made me say uncles. Shane and, uh, Mark.
Okay. Kevin Alexi, uh, to the Property Maintenance Code Problem Resolution Team, David Coe to the Zoning Board of Adjustments, Deb Cotier is the Shadrin representative to the Panhandle Area Development District, Mark Graves is the Exfil Fishtail Representative for the Shadrin Dawes County Area Chamber of Commerce, myself, George Klein, as the City Council Representative for the Northwest Nebraska Development Corporation, and Deb Cotier is the City Representative to the Heartland Expressway Association. So does anyone have any concerns about any of those appointments? Probably take care of it all in one lump, um, motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, go ahead with the people listed for the boards and commissions as you just stated.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by, um, Clay to go ahead and appoint all of those listed, so. Have any questions?
Sure.
Could, could we have roll call please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
George, back up to the, the resolution thing. I think we have two different things here that we're doing. The resolution approves what the progress estimate was, and that's from the engineers. The bills themselves, McQueen submitted the bill for the two ninety-six, and so there, or two ninety-seven, so there's two different issues here. With the resolution, it's only approving that we agree with what the engineers are saying on that, that they have approved up to the two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And then McQueen, McQueen's a separate item listed on there, they've already submitted a bill for the two hundred ninety-six thousand for the snow blower plus the other part for the other thing, so I believe it's two different issues, if that makes sense, in my mind.
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd agree, go ahead and approve this. Before we send the check,
We can.
I think we ought to have.
Verify for them.
Verify that we have approval from the, uh, Department of Transportation as well as the engineers.
And we can definitely do that.
I mean, that, that's what the engineers are.
Yep, and that's, that's what they're following up on for all that stuff.
Therefore. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I believe it, it is two different issues. One is, is dealing with the resolution to approve what, what the engineers have done so far, which is what you're doing with that resolution. And then the claims list is actually the bill from McQueen for that, which would be two separate issues on it. But we can verify that too, we can hold the check if you guys so desired, um, and do something different, or we can try to find out, do whatever we have to do, I guess, I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sure. I just, the email that Janet's looking for, and she said it wasn't sent to hers, and she can't find it right now, so.
Okay.
But that's, that, I believe we're dealing with two different issues. One is approving the resolution for what the engineers have agreed to so far, and then as far as McQueen has sent us the bill because they've delivered the product already.
Yeah. Convi- conveniently, we have the auditors on site, so before we.
Well, yeah, they, they went home.
You, 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 you release that tomorrow.
Yep. We can discuss it.
I, 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 I might, I might not. I might not sign that claim check tonight.
That might be worthwhile doing.
Okay.
So I think you're back up to the resolution
Alright.
for approving what the, the auditor.
Well, I, I think the resolution is correct, I don't think the payment is correct.
The payment is correct, okay.
So we can, if we can, we can hold on to that check until
Yeah.
we get everything clear.
Right, yeah.
Well.
Tec- tec- technically, I think we need another resolution to pay the retainage.
We do have to have another one for you to pay the, the, the ten percent difference.
I think right now we should just, just be cutting the check for the two sixty-six.
For the two sixty-six?
Yeah.
Well, we can approve that bill for that, and then we can go from there, that's what you may as well like us to do. So approve the resolution for the two sixty-six, and then we'll go ahead and approve for the two sixty-six plus the other bill.
Eleven hundred or whatever it is.
Whatever it was, I can't remember what, we don't have that in front of me, from the street shop.
I do.
You have the dollar amount?
One thousand eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay. And then, so we can do that. And then we can just recut that check.
Yeah.
Yep, and then that way we'll be taking care of it.
Yeah, I think so.
So, should we make a new resolution then?
No, the resolution's okay.
Okay.
Will be fine, just when you get to the claims, you guys can change that claim that you're gonna pay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
The two sixty-six plus a thousand, eight dollars and ninety-two cents for McQueen. And we can cut that check for that, and we'll explain to McQueen what we're doing.
Okay. So, could we have roll call please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to introduce, uh, um, make a motion to pay the claims as presented, and then we'll get into what we gotta change.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, I made the motion seconded by Shane, pay the claims. And going back full circle then, um, we'll be reducing the payment to McQueen by the retainage of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents. And that's, I think, is the only other change, um. I did notice kind of an alarming thing, there, there's a bill to Nebraska Land Tire for diagnostic report on the Ford Edge.
Yes.
Which says it's not safe to drive.
That is correct. We have, um, the Ford Edge is the one that's generally the city manager's car, and that one goes out, I know the police department has used it, we've had the library use it, uh, multiple departments use it throughout the area, but here we can get it in there to get some suspension fixed and some other things done, taken care of. They recommend it not to leave the city limits. And so they wrote on their not safe to drive.
Is that the one we drove to Lincoln last year?
Yes. But that was last year, Shane.
Seems okay to you, huh?
But, yeah, we have it scheduled to go in on January fifteenth, or January thirteenth, excuse me, to get repairs taken care of on it, so. It's a vehicle that has about ninety-four thousand miles on it, um, two thousand thirteen unit. So, we believe it's worthwhile to repair for right now, put some different tires on it. It's caused some issues with wear and tear on the tires itself, so. Just things, it's part of units getting old and being used, so.
So, after that discussion, uh, do we need a motion to change the amount by the, we discussed, discussed it? You're taxing my brain here.
Well, we're not taxing it too hard, George. We're gonna make you earn your pay tonight.
Yeah.
I come up with two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents for that payment on McQueen.
Twenty-nine thousand, six forty-one fifty from eight twenty-five. Oh, you, okay, you took it off of.
Yeah, I took it off of the, the Queen bill, so I added the two sixty-six, seven, seven, three, point, five, zero, plus a thousand, eight dollars and ninety-two cents. If we change that, we'll have a correspondent to the bottom
Okay.
to cover that.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to you guys.
Yes. So, with all that being said, we have roll call please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
Yeah, with all that fun stuff. I left, lost my train of thought. Okay, it is now time for public comment. If anyone wishes to make public comment, uh, who addressed the council on a matter not on this agenda may do so. And we allow three minutes to speak. Okay, city manager report.
Uh, thank you, George. I just got a couple of things, um, that the council and the public need just to be aware. We're starting to work on the website itself, and a couple of the things that we're gonna bring up is, one thing that we're gonna be offering is the dial truck can now be requested via electronically as well, as opposed to calling in all the time. Um, just for convenience for those that may or may not be able to call in during their work hours or whatever, or when those guys might be possibly there. We still have the answering machine up there, but it's just another way of, a form of communication. We're gonna be updating more of that website, doing some different, uh, plans, uh, designs. We have Katie, we have Nicole and Jen that are all working on this, along with Civics Plus, is that right? That, um, is gonna be helping us to try to update our stuff, try to make it more navigable for people that wanna see what we have and make the forms available. Um, just different things as we're working through the whole process. So that's one thing I wanted to let the council be aware of. The other thing I just wanted to bring up was the snow removal. Um, I know we had several people asking us why the plows were not out on some things, and then I had people that were wondering some different questions on it. Uh, generally, we do not send plows out until we have four inches on the ground, or if we know that there's gonna be continuance of a lot more snow coming in. Um, Dustin did come out yesterday and he did, uh, do a very good job on the majors, and then the next couple of days we'll be cleaning up as much as we can. We appreciate people that are able to give us that, uh, space on the sides for that. And, uh, we appreciate people that, uh, help us make sure that we keep our streets and sidewalks cleaned up. And uh we appreciate people that uh help us make sure that we keep our streets and sidewalks cleaned off. I also wanna stress that after the event has occurred, ordinance states that we should be covering this. Uh, the sidewalks and their privates where people will be walking on, uh, should be cleared off within twenty-four hours. Uh, just to help fill our ordinance, is that correct, chief?
Twenty-four hours, that was the situation.
Yes, and so we just wanna remind people of that, being the first storm, um, it was good for us, cause we've had, um, still a relatively young crew out there doing some stuff. We found out some things, we we learned some issues, uh, we had a couple breaks, which we always have, because it's equipment just being run. And uh just fortunate that uh it wasn't any more than what they were predicting, cause I know at first they were saying raining an inch, and then they changed it one to three inches, and then they changed it five to eight inches, and. The reports were going all over the place when we were going and looking at stuff, so. Uh, with that being said, that was the biggest thing, I just wanted to make sure that uh people understood what we're, where we're at and doing things, and if they have questions, they can give me a call. Be more than happy to answer any of those things, or if you see any concerns of of what we're doing, wh- how we're doing things. We're not saying we do perfect, but we will change if we have suggestions that might make things easier and and helpful. So, that's all I have for you tonight, George.
Is that four inches just like a rule of thumb, is there? What's the the thinking behind that, I'm just curious.
Well, the four inches is generally, um, it makes it worthwhile for us to do that, it it. In our mind, it it's well worth to to cut it down and and get the ice and snow off of there. Now, we could, we could go out there as soon as that, but it's one of those things, um, on this is, if you start moving the snow when there's only one inch out there. We're adding manpower, wear and tear on equipment, fuel, things like that, four inches is what we generally do. Now, we do take, try to get some consensus around the areas to see what other people are doing. And even like Rapid City, Scotts Bluff, Gary and Alliance, a lot of them do not do residential's anymore at all, they just do majors. Or if there's big snowstorms, then they start digging out people. Um, you know, the citizens of Shatterton have been very, very fortunate with us to having to be able to do that, and the crews, equipment to do a lot of the things. Um, but yeah, four inches is kind of what we've decided, is there is no guideline.
Sure.
On it, it's just a kind of a a specification, what we have with our budgets, we feel that that's a inadequate number, but. You know, with the streets being the way they are, especially with school starting tomorrow, just wanted to make sure that everybody slows down on the intersections, they're gonna be a little icy tomorrow again. People are gonna track in through the intersections, realize we got younger kids that are driving up there by the high school, and those guys have been out sanding, they've been out plowing, doing all these things. But there's still gonna be slick spots, no matter what we do, so. But if you got any other questions or any other concerns or you see spots, please give me a call, and we'll try to get things rectified and change them around the best we can. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council closing comments, we'll start with Clay.
Uh, I just wanna wish everyone a Happy New Year, and like Tom mentioned, uh, with winter weather finally coming around and school starting up this week. Just encourage everyone on slowing down and being a little more cautious, especially in the mornings. That's about it for me.
Well, I just kinda like to em- amplif- amplify what Tom said, um, especially in the downtown areas, if there's some vacant buildings or not occupied, um. You know, try to reach out to somebody to get them taken care of, but worse, maybe you could just volunteer and help. Your neighbor out who's no longer here, and, you know, I I know that's part of owning property is you gotta take care of it, but sometimes being. Helpful neighbor is a nice thing to do.
I think George said what I was gonna say about just helping your neighbor out with snow removal, um, and uh. Like Clay said, the kids are gonna be out on sidewalks again here tomorrow, so bump the brakes a little bit if you have to, um. Also, I I uh came across a a couple from Texas at the end of December, um, here in town, they had never been to Shatterton, and they. Said we have a cute little town that they really enjoy being in, so, kinda feels good to hear that.
Well, just like everyone else is saying, it's winter time in Nebraska, so it's gonna be snowy and slick, so take a little extra time. Making sure your windshield's clear and and taking, uh, going a little slower, um, things are icy and slick, and just be careful.
Um, I just wanna say I'm excited to hear that there are some updates coming to the city website, uh, that's something that uh folks have just kinda casually mentioned to me. Uh, they'd like the information to be more accessible, more easily navigable, um, and that is a big part of. Um, my own interest in being on city council, is just getting uh more information in front of our our citizens, they can. Know how the city operates, um, and I've also been working on that for myself. Um, I met with uh Deb Cotier this weekend, uh, she took some time out to give me a rundown of what Northwest Nebraska Development Corporation does. Uh, that was very informative, and uh I know Tom is working on putting together some uh tours of the various city departments, I'm looking forward to that too. Um, just knowing all the ins and outs of how Shatterton works, so, looking forward to that.
George, one one extra question, which since Kevin did bring up, if um. Anybody wants those tours, you guys need to kinda give me an idea of what times.
Sure.
Work best for you guys, Clay and Kevin, um, if there's certain times and anybody else that hasn't been around to all of them. Be more than happy to schedule around, you guys just give me some dates, times that work best, and we'll do everything in our power to make it work here in the next month or so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
I made the motion seconded by Shane, could we have a roll call, please?
Anderson.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Alexi.
Yes.
See you in two weeks.